7:02, we are ready to go. I will call this meeting to order. Roll call. Joel.
Here.
Rod.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
Ethan.
Here.
Thanks for coming even in summertime. Carly.
Here.
Adam.
Here.
And also here.
Lorna. Has the meeting been properly announced?
Yes.
All right. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could someone like to make a mission statement? Ethan, since you're here, you probably don't have any school news.
Yeah.
So why don't you pick it up for us?
The Mount Hope Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering the productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you. Number two, agenda and minutes approval. Is there a motion to approve the presented agenda?
So, I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Rod, second by Jim. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Two B, approval of our June 5th, 2023 Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes.
So.
Is there a second? Second. Motion by Rod, second by Joel. All those in favor of approving the June 5th Board Regular and Executive Meeting Minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Three, addressing the school board. Any school news?
I just have the this week and last week. We had boys and girls. There were a couple of changes from Mount Hope. Hang on to that.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'd like to add Ethan was one of those representing Mount Hope's school district.
Yay! Today was the first day of summer school, and we had a wonderful turnout that will continue for the next two weeks. There'll be a break during the week of July 4th, and then we'll resume with our second session. I want to thank Director Straka and her team for helping to really set us off on a positive foot. And then also, last Wednesday night was a very special night for our community as the village, the softball club, and Mount Hope School District came together to christen our new lights that we have at the softball field. So it was really a special night.
Awesome. Anyone else have school news?
I just have to give a shout out to our 6th through 12th grade choir students who came and performed at the Mallards to a sold-out, full stadium. It was very, very cool. And the middle school musical was fantastic. I've never actually been to one of the middle school musicals, and it was great. Very cute.
Nice.
I was also going to mention the middle school musical, which was super cute, as you said. Obviously, a ton of work that goes into it. I also had a chance to sneak in and visit to the middle school just before school ended to meet a little bit with Paul Christensen and talk about how things are going there. And he just commented that it's been, they've had a good year overall that, you know, felt like much more back to normal this year. Next year, they're going to, he's going to, they're going to keep focusing on teacher clarity, professional learning communities, and focusing on the adjustment from eight sections in the middle school down to seven sections. And then I asked him what we could do to continue to support them, and he mentioned the same facilities, conversations that we've had around just some of the awkward spaces in here and closets that we're making into usable space. So those, I know we're all aware of the facilities challenges.
Thank you, Carly. Anybody else?
I was at the village meeting beginning of the month. Not a whole lot that's pertinent to the school district per se, other than Brian mentioned that he was talking to you just about trying to get us all together at some point. And then the Public Works Committee, I guess, has decided to now charge the school district for some of the use of salt. I'm not sure you're aware of that, but that's, it's not a ton, but that's... We seem to see that happening in a lot of different places, so.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Three B, citizens' cameras. I don't imagine we have anything. All right. Four A, personnel transactions. Is there anything for us to know?
Just two quick items, board members, first. There is an addendum, and that addendum includes the name of the gentleman who is part of the fabric of this very school's success, the middle school's success. I'm referring to Gordy Bruner. Gordy has been with our district since 1993. And as we were chatting the other day, he said to me, "You know, Steve, I suspect I've probably seen 20,000 students over the course of those 30 years." Talk about a guy who'd love to build relationships with kids. In fact, he said to me, "This has just been a great place to work. I may not have left the school the way I found it in '93, but I truly would like to thank the district for having the trust in me to care for your buildings." He has left an indelible mark on our school district, and we wish him only the very best. His last day, by the way, will be July the 31st. Thank you for considering his well-deserved retirement.
Motion to approve with the addendum. Motion by Leah, second by Carly, to approve the personnel transactions with the addendum. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number five, consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to discuss? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Leah, second by Adam, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Six A, committee member reports. Leah, or excuse me, Carly, you want to start?
Sure. We last met almost a month ago, so on the 22nd of May, so a lot of the topics we discussed have probably already, you've heard of or come before. We gave an update on the community visit that Dan Rossmiller from Waspe came in and hosted at Chulins. We, which, I know we talked about that before. We talked a little bit more about some of the potential legislation out there that we might want to keep our eyes on as it moves through, but we didn't really talk so much yet about moving forward with really analyzing their developing positions yet. But those included things like firearms on school grounds, some of the behavioral health reimbursements, and there was, I can't remember where it is. I think maybe tied up in budget legislation or separate, I can't remember, tied around when boards could go to referendum, limiting when boards could go to referendum. So those were, those are a few things we identified down budgetary to keep our eyes on as they move forward. Since then, there's been a lot more movement on the budget since that meeting, so we need to get on my nerves. We've got a lot more to talk about on Monday.
Any questions for Carly? Adam, you want to talk about the education committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Exciting development to talk about in terms of the curriculum update. This coming year, we're going to be offering Spanish 5 that has an opportunity for earning college credit through a program that the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh has, called the CAP Program, Cooperative Academic Partnership Program. And there'll be, it's concurrent high school and college credit, I should state. It's a chance, you know, we obviously got a long history with AP, and CAP is a different pathway to be able to provide that. And there is a cost associated with students, but it's one quarter of the cost of a regular college credit. So good bargain, good opportunity, and really excited to pilot that next year. Other developments worth talking about? Separate notes here. We are going to be looking at Chromebook purchases for 5th and 9th grade students. Also, equity update, just talking about wanting to provide more scenario training for staff to enable them to feel comfortable having a lot of conversations. So that's going to be a focus on the equity front coming up soon. Those were, those were the two big ones that I came out of that meeting with. Also, the academic standards document that we looked at at Education Committee will be on the first vote meeting in July for consideration. So feel free to check that out. No changes from last year, just an update, straight update.
Any questions for Adam? Thank you, Adam. Brian, 6B, youth risk behavior survey data.
All right. So we did a little comparison data. We haven't done this before for the full board, kind of looking at different pieces of data. If you've gone through the full WRBS, this is the high school version of all of the data in itself, and so there's lots of different data points. And so I just kind of pulled some pieces that I thought were important and kind of could, you know, go into different discussions. But if there's other pieces you want, I think this is a good layout to then keep going, you know, and providing more information and more data as we move forward. So the one piece that's in there that you might have noticed is the middle school 2019 data is not available. We have scoured everything that we have, and we're 99% sure that we did not administer it that year. We do the assessment in December, and if you were around then, we did have staff switch right in January. And so we do not believe that the middle school was given that assessment that year. But the high school was, so. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And kind of when going through it, right, a new piece of information is the first one. It was just started in 2019. And this was, I just got back from three days at the SRO conference, really talking about school safety. And this was a piece that was frequently brought up, which is being sent sharing sexual photos. And a lot of times, this is referred to as sexting. And we look at 18% of high schools have sent, received, or shared sexual photos within the last 30 days, and 6% of our middle school students. And I think what we heard from so many parents of kids that were presenting, you know, kind of in video format, when we talk to our kids about alcohol or drugs, it's always, "Don't do it." But if you do do it, you need to come to me, right? I can be, I can help you through that too. If you make one mistake, it doesn't mean you make two. And they really talked about, we need to have those same conversations in this regard. Because what's happening is the increase of social media platforms is that other people have access to those and can break into those accounts. And so what's happening is more photos are being shared. The sextortion is, it's at an alarming rate. And it's really coming from countries in Africa, mainly Nigeria, where they're breaking into Snapchat, they're getting accounts, and then they're using photos to blackmail kids for money or for additional photos. And kids feel stuck, and they don't know what to do. And so us as adults, and in schools, they have talked to us about really, "Don't do it right first, right? 100% don't do it, but if you do, there's resources and there's help that can help support you." And so that's just an important part to look at as we're noticing it's, we're on trend with state data at our high school level, but it's still a pretty high rate. The second one is that we agree or strongly agree that bullying is a problem in our school. When we look at the high school state data, sometimes they don't pull just, they don't give us just the number. They kind of break it down, and so that way, in the big bullet, you can see it's, they broke it down into food insecurity versus not food insecure. If you have a health condition, no health condition, or if you're LGBTQ, or if you're heterosexual. And so you can see the discrepancy in there. It's really high numbers, right? And you can see that we fluctuated as a district, but 35% of our high school students believe that bullying's a problem, where 30% of our middle school students do. Just to reiterate too, this is not seniors. So it is 9, 3, 11th grade of high school.
And the chart is our students, not state, right?
That chart is state.
Okay.
Yep, that charts the state data.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yep. Thanks for asking that. Yeah, because that's, they didn't give a number for state. So that's, that's the state. Yeah. And we have all of that information broken down too, and it's very similar to that, especially the LGBTQ students. It's significantly higher than students who identify as heterosexual in the document. What's interesting here is that when you go into the next question, and a question that I didn't include, but students who have been bullied electronically at the high school is 14%, at the middle school it's 13%. And when the question specifically asks at the high school, "Have you experienced bullying at school?", for our high school, it's 18%, and our middle school, it's 19%. And so the reality of kids who are, identify on this, on this survey as being bullied is significantly less than the perception that it's a problem within the school. And so it's a reality versus perception. And so we need to do a better job, and we just did talk a little bit about that in Safety and Wellness, about what we're doing as a district, what are some of our procedures and processes around bullying as well? Because so many more people think that it's a problem than are actually indicating it is a problem. And then when you go into some of our other data, you know, the one issue that there's problems, indicate a problem with anxiety within the past 12 months, 46% of our middle and high school students. That's kind of around where we've been at. It's been pretty consistent. 52% of state data. Seriously considered suicide is again really alarming, especially when you look at our results from 2017. It's just so much higher. We were at single low digits, and now we're up to 17% and 15% are indicating that they're seriously considering it. It's in alignment with state data, but that's not anything we really care, we don't care about at this point, right? It's too high of a number.
So this actually is more frightening, the 12%. When you, when you, I mean, I know there are rules about comparing percentages, but even if you were to just convert those to the gross numbers, that's something like 70% of the people, of the kids who seriously considered suicide made a plan, and that is absolutely like freaking off the charts. And just unbelievably frightening.
Correct. Okay, 12% and 9% have made a plan. Yeah, it's very alarming, and it's concerning. And it's, you know, when you look at 2017 for our high school, it is a significant increase of kids, or a small decrease in middle school, but still too high. And then ever tried vaping, juuling? It was, you know, 2017, it was barely there. That data point is, was 15% of males. You can't see it on this sheet, but if you clicked on it, and 10% of females in 2017. And then we had a big spike, which is, if you remember being on the board, we've done a lot of work around, the students actually did a lot of work on trying to end that and share the negative causes, and then it's gone a little bit lower. The one area where we're higher than the state average is in drinking alcohol within the past 30 days. 26% was at the state average. And when you look at our data, it's consistently gone up every year. And as well at the middle school. Three hours or more a day on a phone, Xbox, or other device is a significant increase. 35% from two years ago to 71%. And then 56% of middle school students. So it's a really high, high amount of time on a device. And then the two questions at the end are ones that we're always working on as a school staff, and these are, a lot of times, are school goals, which is, we want kids to feel like they belong and that they have at least one teacher to talk to within our school. Data's been pretty consistent at the high school for the one teacher and fluctuating at the high school for strongly believing. But I would say that an 80% of kids who strongly believe that they belong in school, in middle school, is a pretty, pretty high rate of belonging, especially when we all know that middle school is one of a lot of people's most difficult three years in school, right? Those are hormones, their development, it's a really difficult area. But those are, that's a pretty high number, but still, still areas to improve upon. And then it drops at the high school. So how do we get more kids involved and feel like they belong there? These aren't, when you kind of look through this data, right, this isn't uplifting or information to see, but it's our reality, and this is information that all of our student services, we've specifically talked about. We've gone through areas with the county and the state and how we can continue, or not the state, but the county and resources that we have with Healthy Kids Collaborative, our Dane County Partners, on different groups that we can involve, and we can involve school in, so we can have more kids, you know, specifically addressing areas of anxiety and depression within our school setting. We have Oregon Mental Health at every building, so I think continuing to share our resources and strategies that we have for all kids.
Does anyone have any questions for it?
Going back to the suicide stats in the research you've done or the conferences or wherever, is there any theory on what's caused that increase?
I think it's just the increase of kids who come to us with concerns around anxiety. The level of anxiety is so high, I even, I am surprised that it's at 46% because that's what we hear over and over from students and from teachers is that, that kids have indicated how anxious they are about getting good grades, doing well academically, school-wise, sports-wise, all of those components. And so that's our biggest, our biggest overall concern.
I know we have Building Bridges at the middle school, and then we have a new program starting at the high school that we just piloted this year and being rolled out next year. The one that was presented to us.
Yeah, yeah, the School Connect.
Yes. I'm guessing that they both address anxiety and helping students? Knowing that the new program is brand new, we'll see how it goes, but the current middle school program, Building Bridges, do teachers get like a refresh? Do they get, you know, like some, you know, I mean, because, or even ask the teachers, "Is this working?", you know what I mean? Because we hear anecdotal things from our students. I just wonder what the teachers think, like, is that? Because these numbers are huge. So is that program working?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think we've specifically asked about the specific program, but if we were, we've asked the participants who are part of Building Bridges to get a survey to complete at the end of each 12-week period. Yeah, I think, I wonder if we're...
Yes, what's the other one? I call it wrong, the wrong thing.
You did.
What's the middle school?
Our social emotional curriculum.
That's what I was trying to get, and I get it wrong every single time.
Second step.
Second step. That's what I was trying to ask about.
Yes, yes.
So that curriculum that the students have, you know, whatever, once a month in their Viking hour. I mean, that's what I was wondering, like, do teachers, I mean, it's like anything, how much are they bought in? How much does the students engage in it? Is that helping with anxiety or suicide thoughts?
Okay, I think that's a good question that we can continue to investigate for sure from a student, from a teacher perspective, if it's making a difference and what we can do more of. The one thing that I did that is a good thing to mention for Building Bridges is this year, we also, our district and Middleton advocated really strongly that Building Bridges continue through 9th grade so that we can have some of those relationships and that kind of that crossover. And when you look at dropout data, a really strong indicator is if you're passing your classes and doing well in your freshman year, it's indicated success through 12th grade. And so we did a pilot this year of allowing 9th graders, and it was really successful. We had very few kids, but it made a big impact on those kids. And so we're going to, that is, it's approved, Building Bridges now will be programmed moving forward, and we can have 9th graders.
Yeah, I mean, because I think that we have some really good supports in place, Building Bridges, Oregon Mental Health. But what are the other things, the second step, that all of our students get? You know, because clearly, this is more students than get those extra services.
Well, and those are some of the things that we're even starting at elementary school that we've, we've talked about in previous information advocacy reports, and it'll be on the July 3rd, one, two. Teaching kids much younger before the stress of middle and high school, what are strategies, how do I identify emotions, and what are the strategies I can do if I'm feeling that I'm in the red zone or the yellow zone? Those are things that we're teaching at a much younger level for all kids instead of specific groups of kids. And so we really changed our entire program to be universal in emotions and feelings and strategies. And that's been a really big shift over the last three years. So I hope that we could see an impact within a couple of years that it, that starts paying off at the middle and high school level.
Anyone else? I have one last question, but...
So I see here kind of a list of symptoms of some underlying concerns. How deep does this drill on, like, okay, kids are feeling anxious? So it'll be interesting to know what's making them feel anxious? Because it's going to be different for kids, and it would be interesting to see if it's a particular, if it's the grades, if it's the, you know, if it's a question.
The WRBS does not get specific into the why. When we do do the Dane County Youth Risk Survey, and we do that in the opposite years, that goes into a little bit more depth. And so next year, I'll be able to share some of it. We have different surveys that give different information, and so that does go into the why a little bit more. And then that's just compared to just Dane County districts.
And that's a tough question for some kids to answer. They may have no idea where it comes from. And that's what's frightening about anxiety and why. I mean, it's one of the chief causes of suicide because comes, don't know where it's coming from, it's rotten and awful, feels just, just, "I gotta get out of this", and they don't know, they don't know where it's coming from.
And if you don't know where it's coming from too, you don't know how to get out of it.
Right, that's exactly right.
You're right.
I am curious if there, at some level, is a role for parental education as we develop these things and, you know, helping, giving parents the information to at least be able to identify themselves, what some of these signs are to look out for and help identify with their own kids? Because you have a kid who's locked himself in his room all the time, and you know, it's harder.
It's not just a 13-year, 14-year.
Right, right. It can be harder to know how and when things might not be going quite right.
Yeah, I was going to ask something very similar, just what, I mean, you talked about who you have shared this information with, but what is relevant for teachers more broadly to know and then parents? You know, like you, if I wasn't in this room, I wouldn't know about sexting. I wouldn't know about the other word that you used, the extortion. Like, I'd never heard that word before. I mean, like, it all makes sense, but like, that's not, like, you're saying, "Don't send the pictures", but yet we don't know about the rest of it, so like, I mean, yes, we should learn that wrong, but yet if you know this, what can be shared in appropriate ways for families?
So not only, not only for parents, but the community too. I think the community would be alarmed by, you know, over 125 students in the high school that seriously considered suicide. You know, I think that's, that's alarming. So not just the parents, but how are we getting the community involved as well?
Because I think the community would want to, like, wrap their arms around the students and be, not that they aren't supportive, but anything they could do to be even more supportive, you know, it just helps them know.
We've never shared community-wide before. We do share with teachers and staff, and this year we did. When I wrote that article for the May Mount Hope email, I did include parts of this, not, you know, the whole, all of this data, but pieces of it, specifically the anxiety and the individuals who are considering suicide into that. That was kind of our first, and I did get multiple emails, like, "Thanks for sharing the information", or like, "How can I help?". So it was seen, and it was good. We are, when I say we, this is kind of the Mount Hope Mental Health Collaborative Coalition. We are planning and implementing a really big fall festival around mental health supports out at a farm. There'll be lots of speakers and strategies and activities, and we're really excited about partnering with that and what that... about partnering with that and what that tail will look like. And so, there'll be more to come on that, but trying to have more involvement for a whole community-wide support as well.
And to Jim's point and Carly, if families are more aware of what's going on, they'll be more likely to, do you know what I mean? Because otherwise you're like, oh, that's a great thing, I don't have to go. Like, or maybe you do have to go, but you know what I mean? If you're like, wait, this is a thing for all.
Well, that's a good, that's, that's a really good reminder about when, if we as a district, you know, could send out a Max email or Facebook post like this is coming up, and this is why it's important.
Right. Yeah. I thought we in the past had posted, at least the Dane County Youth Survey on the website. Am I misremembering? Like, long, probably before you were here even.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't recall doing that, but likely.
I mean, I don't know if it, I don't know if it was worth it or not, but I feel like we used to post it so that the community could see what these numbers were.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't know if it's good or bad, but we used to weigh it a long time ago.
We did, based on when we originally shared these a couple of months ago with the Safety and Wellness Committee, we did, they did, the student services staff created a bunch of slides on some of this key stuff, and they presented it at staff meetings with all staff, so all staff are aware, and we did do that this year. So, yeah, and we can look at different ways to make it effective. Yeah.
You know, our students aren't gonna like hearing this, but I think it's just one more example of why we need to revisit cell phones in our schools. There's reams of white paper about the light that emits from our phones on our computers and these sorts of things, such that if you've got kids who run their Xboxes for, what did they say, seventy-one percent or their fear more times, fear more than predicted. Not that that's the sole indicator, but that's one indicator. There's things that we can do to bring about less worrying schools around what's happening on social media during the school day, access to this, anything we can do to just chip away at helping our kids.
Yeah.
I do think there's a correlation there for sure. You get buried in there, and that increases isolation and spirals from there.
Yeah. Say later on the positive side of that about the value of providing opportunities for kids to get involved, whatever different clubs it is, you know, opportunities, athletics, all these kinds of things.
As usual, Brian, thank you. Thank you. Extend our gratitude to the student services team as well. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Seven A, Sarah Straka, first reading of Board Policy three seven seven point one, State Tournament Attendance. Tonight, we do two policies that are, have small tweaks, just to bring them up to date for some WISB thinking and language. So, with the State Tournament Attendance piece, Colleen Nassim, I worked a couple of months ago to just brush through this policy, make sure, because I were up to date. Specific dollar amount, as you can see, for breakfast, lunch, and dinner was removed. We don't like to have specific things like that in policies more in general. That's why we put the language, WIA, no reimbursement rate. So, whatever that is for that year, for that season, that's what we would be reimbursed as a school district. First, I guess hopefully to State Tournaments. Other than that, and then there's just a few other, just language tweaks, making sure, again, that our policy reflects our practice, our practice reflects our policy, and we can see those changes as well.
Any questions for Sarah?
I have a slew of questions. I'm sorry. Okay, so, I'll start at the beginning. So, we'll provide transportation for coaches, participants, managers, and cheerleaders participating in tournament competition. What do we define as a participant? Because later on, we say that we will only cover for actual participants. To me, actual participant is if you go for basketball, there are only five kids on the court, and we take ten kids and set a play, those seven are the actual participants, and the other three are there, but they're not actual participants. So, what's, what are we defining as a participant?
I would think even on a roster, we'd be, would be a participant, a part of the program, be our participants. Sometimes JV players move up from our state play, they're considered participants, if they're dressing, if they're a manager, if they're part of the program.
Okay. That work, I don't know, that, that one, it's fine. It's not a hill I'm dying. Second one is we see transportation made by bus or school van.
Do we mean school bus or any bus? It depends on, I know a couple of years ago, like, we had a need for coach buses, there are school districts that need good for coach buses. Depends distance, availability of drivers, so bus allows for that.
Perfect, that's what I was hoping you were gonna say. Third question, so we'll cover for cheerleaders to get transportation, and we'll cover for them to get admission, but we don't cover lodging.
What is, what is the rationale between not covering their lodging? Number four, Leah, is that where you're at?
Uh, number three.
Number three?
We don't list them, we, we list them in number one, and we list them in number four, but we, according to this, we wouldn't pay for them to stay overnight, but we'll drive them up there, so.
Yeah, I could talk with Colleen on that piece of it, with the post-policy, yeah. Looking at the State Tournament Attendance piece, because it is more general, I could talk to her if we want that in there. It probably is our practice, we have anything associated, maybe they do come up the day of and go back, but I could talk with that piece if you'd like to know more.
Yeah, I mean, because that really is like their, that's how they're doing their sport is by cheering for these teams. So, if we're going to pay for the team, we should pay for them, like, they should be covered as well. I feel like that also could be a little bit of a, one of those titles, one of the, thank you, one of those titles.
Yeah.
So, that would, if I could see that happen. And then, no, that was it. That's all I got. And I, I think we might wanna be more clear on what participating means. Like, if we are talking rostered players, and I know it gets a little tricky because like, when it comes to like state track, you're only sending those kids who made track with state, but like, if you're sending the basketball team, you're sending the rostered team. So, get that we wanna be a little flexible, but I also feel like might be, we button that up a little bit on what we really mean by participants.
Sure.
But, again, not another one of that.
I have just a quick thought on through C and D with the managers. I'm just wondering, would it make more sense if we said approved managers instead of just pegging it to, only to, in a policy?
Might I circle back and see if there was a reason, a story?
Yeah. I'm guessing it has something to do with the WIA that, you know, Colleen listed just two people, but I'm just thinking it'd be, if we have two, if we have four managers working with the team all year long, we have some success, they go to state, and we have to tell two that it can't go, you know, so.
Well, we also only call out two for, for lodging, so we don't call out two specifically for travel and two for admission. So, are we gonna drive four up and then pay for two, like?
I think anytime it says managers, I think we should have approved managers, opposed to just having a definitive number.
If you're okay with this, we'd like to go back then and have some more conversation and bring this back at a future meeting. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I have one more consideration to bring up in terms of the lodging. I know this is an extreme case, but what happened at track meet this year, the thing going into the, the hours of the morning, is there any consideration that we need to list in terms of lodging on the backend, you know, of, of an event? If there's a situation where you're a long ways away, do we always want to bring kids back if they're done competing at two in the morning or whatever it is? Or would there be an opportunity to, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, wouldn't want it to be ruled out that you can get a hotel in a, in an unusual case like that?
It's a lodging flexibility for those guys, is what I heard you say.
Yeah. Weather, weather. All these, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because some of those guys didn't run until midnight, after midnight. Because one of them was like, did I technically compete on the state Saturday because I planned at twelve twenty-one or whatever it was?
Yeah, and I know that's highly unusual, but we just did want to, thank you for saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you wanna shift to first reading Policy three forty-five point four-three, high school grade status?
Yep.
You finished it enough. Sorry, I just, I know that's the, thanks, David.
Okay, yes. Some, again, minor tweaks to the high school grade level status.
Yeah, that's right.
Removing the youth options program and changing that to early post-secondary activities as the state fluctuates and what those programs' names or titles are. Again, we just wanted to have more of the broad term. And then aligning with first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade in our school district, removing the freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior as well. So, we have ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, which is what we see in campus, what we see in transcripts, and what, the minus K twelve, four K through twelve, on top of grade levels. And again, adding cross-references as, as policies have changed, we've had cross-references that have been added. So, nothing big here.
Sarah, I have a question. There's a comment on the side, all about foreign exchange students, but yet they aren't referenced in the policy, and I just wondered if some of that information should be included in our policy? I know that there's, and maybe this part in particular is in a different policy, but there's questions about foreign exchange students participating in graduation or what the, I just wondered if some of this should be in here.
There or within a, we could, we could look at either.
I just, I just wanted to be the passion of the board, if they'd like it within the policy.
Or cross-reference it with our foreign exchange student policy, just, I love a good cross-reference.
Yeah. No. It was just a really informative little note there, and I was like, oh, is this gonna get lost? Like, I just learned a whole lot.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Motion to approve.
It's a vote.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Leah, second by Carly. This is a first reading, so we have to roll call votes. All, or now. Joel, are you in favor of approving Policy three four five?
Yes.
Four three. Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And I, yes. You want to bring the other policy back?
Okay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Scott DeYoung, first reading of Policy six nine one, disposal of school district records.
Hello. This is a policy that the Finance Committee reviewed back in Maine. The state of Wisconsin created a new records retention schedule back in the spring, and our current policy that we had in place actually suggests that our school district does comply with whatever the existing retention schedule is at the state level. The only thing we're looking to change, I guess, is two items. One is removing any dates that was in the policy, because I think it referred back to the year 2010. It just didn't make sense to refer to any date in the policy itself, because the other part of the policy already stated that we as a district will accept and recognize whatever current retention policy is in place at the state level. So, it was a matter of removing the date, updating the records piece, and then, Rod, you were kind enough to suggest that after the Word Department there at the end of the first paragraph, that we add in a public instruction, so we recognize that it's being distributed by DPI. The attorney at, at Welbryer did review this policy in coordination with the new retention schedule to make sure that we were totally in compliance, and so, this would be just a simple reflection at this review. And I apologize, before I was coughing, after Sarah was talking. And I'm not sick, but I must as well, I want to, so.
Any questions for Scott? Motion to approve. A second. Motion by Leah, a second by Carly, to approve the Policy six nine one, disposal of school district records. Any further conversation or discussion? Okay, this is also a roll call. Joel?
Yes.
Rod?
Aye.
Leah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And I, yes. Thank you, Scott. Do you wanna move on to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget revisions?
Sure. So, typically in the month of May and June, through a parole with our auditors, we take a look at, really a glance back on where we landed for the year. And there's always a few modifications that are made, either between variables that are told to us from the state and federal governments, but as well as any fluctuations that we have primarily due to enrollment and staffing. And so, you may recall that this is the format that we use for revisions, and we only recognize the line items that we need to make revisions to. So, the two budgets that we're looking to make revisions to, one is the General Fund. You may recall that, we call that our General Fund, Fund Ten, we always call this the fund that keeps the lights on. And then Fund Twenty-Seven is our Special Education Fund, which we'll talk about in a minute. The Finance Committee last Monday reviewed these, so thank you Finance Committee and Jessica for your attendance. On the revenue side of the house for the General Fund, of course, since winter, we've seen significant increases in interest rates, which is fantastic. I'm excited as we get into our next budget year that we can recognize a significant increase in enrollment with interest rates. That's the revenue from local sources. The next one is a modification to our open enrollment. So, we know our kids in our buildings when we start school, but we see fluctuations, as you can, as you can imagine, during the year with kids coming and going. In the month of April and May is when DPI gives us our official open enrollment count for the school year, and so, we hold off on making any modifications until we get there. A change of fifty-four thousand dollars is just a handful of students, so we're pretty close to where we were expecting to be at the beginning of the year. Revenue from state sources is this small increase that we received in our transportation aid. So, every summer, we report how many students we have riding at different categories of miles, under two miles, two to five miles, and so on. And then the following year, the state then determines how much money a district will give based on our data that we submitted the prior summer. So, we found out in the spring that we'd be getting just over seven thousand dollars more than what we anticipated. That's on the revenue side of the house. On the expenditure side of the house, we saw some savings in substitute staffing for the year. There are times where we're, you know, fluctuate the other way, so that's a challenge with substitute staffing, is you just don't know quite where you're gonna land, how many people will be gone over the course of the year. We've also, similarly to the open enrollment revenue side, we also some, saw some small fluctuation in the open enrollment on the expenditure side. And then last but not least, and most importantly, I would say, is our connection between our General Fund and our Special Education Fund. Steve, thank you for highlighting that non-program transactions. So, what that simply means is, if we see an increase in our special education costs, we, the amount of money that we budget in our General Fund needs to go up for our special education transfer at the end of the year. A better way of saying that is, we receive quite a bit of dollars from both the state and federal governments for both grants and categorical aids, but of course, public schools, we don't receive enough money to cover the entire cost of our special education program through the revenue that we receive from the government. And so, as a result, public schools are responsible for budgeting a specific amount of money that we need to transfer from our General Fund to make our Special Education Fund whole at the end of the year. We cannot have a surplus or a deficit in our Special Education Fund. And so, the increase of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, the vast majority of that, almost a hundred thousand dollars of it, is from, due to our special education increases. Now, as we switch down to that second category for special education, we're seeing an increase of revenue, ninety-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, that is that transfer. And you might say, well, you know, gee, what, what was the cause of our increase in our special education program? We actually saw some increase in our para-needs that we had, and then also, we've had a few higher cost situations where students need to get services from an outside agency. And so, when that happens, we provide that service, but of course, we need to increase our funds in that category to be able to cover those costs. And so, you'll see from a budget point of view, it doesn't modify our budget in Fund Ten overall, and of course, in Fund Twenty-Seven, it doesn't modify it in terms of outline, because we cannot have a fund balance in special education. And so, again, Finance Team thinks, again... And so again, finance team thinks, again, we do these a couple of times during the year. And then the reason why, again, it's in this format is because by state statute, this is the format that we need to provide to the newspaper upon board approval, so I always like for the board to be able to see exactly what's gonna be posted in the newspaper. Thank you.
Any questions for Scott? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. A second.
Alrighty. Motion by Rod, second by Adam, to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three budget revisions. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thanks, Adam. Appreciate your attention to detail, Scott.
Thank you.
Dr. Slender?
Well, tip of the hat to Will Brugman, who is our coordinator of technology. He has been working with Sarah Straka and myself to develop a technology replacement plan. And I'm pleased to share with you the fruits of that work. This is what's being proposed for purchases for new sta, for staff, I should say, at the high school. You may remember, as part of our successful operational referendum, we were able to allocate additional funds in order to help get us onto the rotation. We're looking at working with various vendors in order to obtain Chromebooks, Hewlett Packard computer stations, desktop stations. I'll come back to Surface tablets, and then monitors. Staff have asked us, is there anyone we could possibly get two monitors? I think most of us tend to like that at our workstations, right? And so we think we can get to a yes by going with this outfit called CDWG Surface Tablets. You might remember, the district probably about ten, twelve years ago, made a significant investment in television sets that allowed people to touch the television and manipulate the information that's on the television. And that is, unfortunately, that, that technology is a dying technology. In fact, to be able to replace that is, is quite cost prohibitive, and as a result, we've sought ways in which we can achieve that same option, but at a much cheaper rate. So buying a sixty-five inch TV set these days is pretty cheap, cheap relatively speaking, seven hundred and fifty dollars or thereabouts. Allowing us to Bluetooth in with a Surface tablet and giving it to a student, let's say in a math class, and say, here's the, here's the problem that we have, use the pen to show the class how you did your work, will allow that to be projected right onto the television screen without having to spend five, six thousand dollars per unit in order to, to maintain that training, so, or maintain that delivery of instruction. So, but there will be, need to be some significant training for our staff on how to use that. And so I'm confident that that's part of the game plan going into, into the fall, but we're asking for the board's consideration for these budgeted technology purchases for the high school beginning this year. Please.
Any questions?
And Dr. Slender, I should, I should point out, it's a, it's a five-year cycle, right? It's a cycle of self, every five.
Thank you for saying that, yes. And so we, we know that the industry average is about four years on Chromebooks. We're trying to eke out an extra year because it's staff who are using them in this case here. But yeah, it's a five-year replacement cycle.
Could you remind me of the, the raw numbers for each of these? Do you have those handy?
Yes, I believe it's, with the exception of the Chromebooks, excuse me, with the exception of Surface tablets, it's one thirty-one, and then it's seventy-nine for the Surface tablets, because support staff does not need the Surface tablets. And the monitors, we're good with, we're just wanting to add to the second monitor.
Yep.
Am I, Sarah, did I cut you off while they're up?
No, you're good. Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? It's a vote.
Second.
Motion by Leah, second by Jim, to approve the budgeted technology purchases. Any further conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? She carries.
Thank you.
Eight A, citizens' comments. Still think it's no. Number nine, future agenda items. Dr. Slender, anything to highlight or anything that anyone wants to add? No? Okay. Number ten, scheduling our next meetings.
Board members, I'm wondering if I could just ask your thoughts on two things. First, I understand that maybe we have not a lot really to report for buildings, grounds, and transportation, and I think, and thank you to Chairperson Heiss for agreeing that there will not be a BGT meeting next Monday, so you can take that off your calendar, but there will still be a virtual community and legislative engagement team meeting at five thirty that night. And then I proposed, and it sounded like maybe there might be some interest in this, and I wanna make certain that everybody could be comfortable with this, is July third, you may remember that we won't have an education committee meeting at six P M. And I wondered, since it is the night before a holiday, and I think there'll be some fireworks over in the neighborhood, if maybe we could utilize a six P M start time for a board meeting instead, so what thoughts would you have?
I say yes. He is busy. Carly?
Great. So then we will plan a meeting. Thank you for that feedback, July third at six P M.
Alrighty. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Anyone? We could sit longer, Rod, if you want.
Oh, free.
I was waiting for you.
I will switch it that way.
Okay. Motion by Leah, second by Jim, to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No. Thanks, everybody.